To call this council meeting to order or start a business pledge.
Would you?
You just said the pledge.
My pledge is to plan the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where we stand, where we're not invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the members.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
Pat Brooks.
Here.
Rob Demmett.
Here.
Brad Orton.
Here.
Richard Reed.
Present.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Wetstone.
Here.
Okay. We don't have any table items, do we? So, new business then. Approval of the minutes. I saw that Mr. Richmond found the two discrepancies that I also found. He found them before I did, so he's always keeping us on our toes, right Christine? So.
Make a motion, move.
There's a motion by Rob.
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. All in favor? Motion carried, seven zero. Okay, Commissioner Business, the different appropriations.
Hello?
We have, Ms. Debbie is gone and we have a wonderful replacement today.
Thank you, so my name is Andrea Shocker, I'm the new HR Director here for government. And so 2A additional appropriation of the opioid unrestricted for $100,000 and the opioid restricted for $50,000. I do have the breakdown if you'd like to hear those.
Yeah, that'd be great if you want to read those out.
Sure, so the opioid restriction for $100,000, we have the safe haven, the sheriff canine, Studio B, men and ladies of honor, and then the Warwick County recovers.
Thank you.
It don't show for the $50,000 though. Crystal, do you have one by chance?
I have, wow. No.
Restricted means that they're required to give it to such an organization. I was in the commissioners' meeting when they read them, but I don't remember them.
Yeah, I just watched it online, they were fine, what I was expecting anyway. Yeah.
I could probably get that from Debbie.
Yeah, we can.
If you want me to wait and do that for her, I can just mark that one through and get it from her.
You can't wait.
No. This is December, so we can't.
Well then Merry Christmas, we're just approving.
I think Debbie, is she available, a telephone if we really need to call her?
I am texting her.
Okay.
These are the requested funds, she just texted me.
Okay.
She must be watching.
Thank you.
She probably is watching. Alright. Do we move to the next one?
Yeah, the $50,000, yeah.
Oh, that's what she was just telling me, she said that one was requested, funds was the $50,000 was requested.
Restricted.
Oh, here she goes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I'll let him know that, thanks.
Okay, she said that they have applications waiting to look at, okay, they're down to $4,000, so she's just asking, go ahead and put the $50,000 in, and then they will review the applications and then disperse those to whoever they decide.
Okay. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the $100,000.
A motion by Brad?
Second.
Approve the $100,000?
Yes.
Second by Rob. Any more discussion on that? All in favor? Carry seven zero. Now the $50,000.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Chris.
And if we would approve this, no we're not in discussion because they had a second yet, but if we were to approve this and they didn't give it to a proper organization, they just wouldn't be allowed to give it to that organization and that money would go away.
We'd have to claw back so you could approve up to the 46, but there's only four that hasn't been awarded, did I hear that right Crystal?
They have $4,000 left and they have several applicants turned in.
Far as that $4,000, I think.
Yep, and so they're wanting to appropriate more money to approve more applicants. Now, remember, it's the last meeting of the year, so that's kind of what makes the difference, to go ahead and get it appropriated.
And Debbie just texted me, she said it is appropriated for the unrestricted, that it was appropriated. Oh, sorry, we're talking about the restricted.
Yeah, we're talking about restricted.
To know who we're giving it to.
Her email that Debbie sent does list BNG, Boonville Utilities, and Renewable Recycling. Is that the same, is that what we're talking about there?
Renewable recyclable?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in the utilities section.
Alright, hold on a second.
No, I'm in the wrong category.
Oh, okay. She's on the phone, hold on.
Okay.
Okay Debbie, you're on.
Okay, so the amount, the projects and the amounts you see listed have already been appropriated, there is a negative balance in the unrestricted and there's around 4,000 in the restricted, I'm just asking for more money to go into each category to go in the grant program so we can fund other projects that are still waiting. So the ones you see on the list have already been appropriated and approved.
Debbie, do you know what the applicants are, the names of the applicants, I was in the wrong category, sorry.
So I closed, I got, I have two applicants, first of all, Warwick County recovers is at a negative 12,000, so if you prove that tonight, the 100 in the unrestricted, they'll get the additional funds and that'll leave 88,000 in the unrestricted to obligate to other projects. If you put the money in the restricted, that'll be like 54 altogether, I have, what I can see, I have two applications waiting to be funded, I haven't even approved them or printed them, I've actually closed down the application process because we're out of money, so I'm wanting to add more money to the program. And each of these projects will have to be reviewed by the opioid committee and by the commissioners before anything is approved.
So is the 50,000 sitting in a fund that we can appropriate from then?
So is it need to be?
Yes.
And it needs to be appropriated tonight?
I'm sorry, say that again.
He said and it needs to be appropriated tonight, it's not something that can wait?
On the restricted, is that what you're talking about?
No, on the unrestricted.
Unrestricted, I at least want enough money to cover that Warwick County recovers, the 13.
I'm sorry Debbie.
Yeah, it is the restricted.
On the restricted, I'm sorry, on the restricted.
So I'm trying to do as many as I can out of restricted before I turn to unrestricted, but the restricted, we're using a lot more money. And again, any monies that go in tonight go to the opioid grant program which must be associated with opioid drug use, it's not for something else, it's in that grant program.
So it can't be encumbered? Does that make a difference?
It's not an encumbered fund.
Well, it could be.
Who?
If she has a claim by the end of December, it could be encumbered, yes.
Yeah.
But you will, you probably will be looking at appropriating again in January.
So actually, I have contracts, everybody that receives opioid funds have contracts, so if they have not drawn and we don't have a claim form, we will attach the contract for the encumbers.
And again Debbie, explain to them, so the restricted can only be spent for what purpose?
Well, for, there's, I think it's around nine to 11 pages online where you can look at exactly, but we're not allowing anybody in the grant program to receive anything unless it meets those guidelines. It's the grant program, the whole program, whether it's restricted or unrestricted, goes to that grant program that is related to opioid, to the abatement of opioids, that same 10, 11 page document, we have not awarded anything that doesn't agree with that program.
I'll second Chris's motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Chris, second by Greg, for the $50,000 for the contractual services, any more discussion? All in favor? Carry seven zero.
Thank you Debbie.
Thanks Debbie.
Thank you.
Alright, for 2B, we have the utilities for the courthouse for 25,000, she has two bills from the Centerpoint invoices, one is $6,432.51, the other one is 14,141, this is just for the two facilities, there will be additional Centerpoint invoices, BNG, Boonville, and Renewable Recycling.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Chris.
Second.
Second by Greg. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Seven zero.
Good. So for 2C, the salary ordinance, two custodial employees for $1,000 and then maintenance assistant for 1,000, so during the holidays, and we have Lisa on vacation, Josh is doing two jobs, he's covering for him and of course Brad. The two custodials, we have, like I said, we have one on vacation, so they were just picking up the hours and the jobs that they were covering, so we didn't have to pull in an outside source, so we're just asking for those funds to be appropriated for that.
And just so you know, this is not an appropriation, it is only the salary ordinance, Debbie told me that they were going to transfer.
From part-time.
From part-time to cover the overtime.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brad, second by Rob. More questions or discussion? All in favor? Carry seven zero.
Do you want me to stay up here for the third one, Christine? So we have one under the Commissioner Auditor Business, it is for the resolution to transfer from Fund 5001 to Fund 5200. So, my understanding with this is with the, basically with the HR position being transferred in and out, we have learned through auditing in the last couple of months between myself and Liz, is that for the long-term and short-term disability, the rates that we received and the rates that were entered into the system were not correct. So when we were getting the premiums from our employees, it wasn't enough to cover those unfortunately, and we were having to pay out more money than we realized. And we're still doing an audit, we really don't know like exactly where it got messed up, but that's kind of the gist of it, is that the rates were not entered correctly and no one was auditing that until just the last couple of months.
Okay, and then to add to that, Debbie had called and asked if there was anything she thought we could do, and the only thing I could think of was to go ahead and transfer from the health insurance fund, which is a benefit fund, to cover the negative balance, in no way am I telling you that it still may not, it still may get audited, okay, either way, like if we leave it in the red, it's going to for sure get written up.
Yeah.
But if we clean it up and we explain to them what we did, it's less likely to get written up, I'm not saying it won't, so.
How much are we talking about?
What's the mission? $25,000.
And that's what we're transferring?
Yes.
How much again?
25,000. And that's an estimate Pat, it's not an exact number, the last I checked is like 14,000, so we're just making sure we do enough to cover it.
We're hoping by the end of the year that we'll have a really good number.
So we won't be in the red.
Correct.
State Board of Counsel probably still ding us, like they, but then if we show them that we've tried to fix the problem, then they should be lenient, they have been in the past, they all can do the right stuff, can't throw us in jail. Motion by Greg.
Second, and this is 09.
Okay. 202, 509. Okay, second by Pat, any more discussion? All in favor? That's seven zero. Okay.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay. Okay, so I can read all of these A through F? Correct?
Correct.
Should I get it right, there's not something in the middle, so, Handbook Policy Reimbursement Transfers Corrections, 4A additional appropriation, Superior Court 2, Vacation Payout for Court Reporter, 2,067.08, 4B salary ordinance, vacation payout superior to court reporter, 2,067.08, selling back 10 days, 4C transfer, child support, transfer from copy paper, 750 dollars, to postage, 750 dollars, 4D prosecutor, transfer general supplies, 500 dollars, to postage, 500 dollars, 4E EMA, transfer from grant maintenance, 881.17, to general supplies, 881.17, transfer from equipment maintenance, 7,709.21, and from other motor supply, 859.14, transfer to equipment, 8,568.35, transfer contractual, transfer from contractuals, 947.07, transfer from postage, 53.90, transfer from travel, 404.78, transfer from training, 454.78, transfer to uniforms, 1,860.52, transfer to communication repair, 135.88, transfer to, or excuse me, from utilities, 1,772, transfer to EMA equipment, 1,907.88. Just to let you know, he did plan on being here, but his grandmother has been hospitalized and she's 100 years old and he felt that he needed to be there and we told him he needed to be there, so it shouldn't be too much question since it's all transfers and not asking for any money, so. For F, salary ordinance, resignation sheriff deputy, 180.25 hours, the 4,943.63.
And then, I'm adding the sergeant. For 32 hours, 1,010.66.
1,010?
Mm-hmm.
66. Motion to approve. Motion by Brad.
I'll second it.
Second by Chris.
Hey Ron, I don't know if it's important or not, but you said transfer to the communication repair, which you actually meant transfer from.
Transfer from.
I just want to put that on record, because you did say that you corrected it the second time, so.
Appreciate it, yeah, so, transfer from communication repairs and from utilities to EMA equipment. Okay, I've got a motion by Brad, a second by Chris, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carry seven zero. Okay, for discussion, stormwater fee.
Good evening, I'm Lori Dahl, the attorney for the storm, for the stormwater board, and...
Jennifer Curry, admin for stormwater department.
We're here to answer any questions about the fee request, I've brought with me copies of the state statute, do you want those?
I've got a copy here, the council members may want an additional copy if you want.
And I've highlighted subsection B, which deals with what the rate needs to be, the exception does not apply, so the board, after holding a public hearing with notice given under Indiana Code Title V, and obtaining the approval of the fiscal body, so we're here to obtain the approval of the fiscal body, we advertised the new rate, we held a public meeting at the stormwater board, of which I would report no public member attended, there was no remonstration for or against the rate increase. The board voted to raise the fee from the current rate of $4.50 per parcel to $8 per parcel, I think that's correct. You have a Economist's Report that's been distributed, I think to Crystal, and passed out among the board, the council, so that you can see how we fare and where we are. Now, many of you probably don't deal with the stormwater board very often, it's much like a utility rate, everyone pays a flat fee per month, it's part of our tax assessments collected twice a year by the treasurer, and it supports improvements to the stormwater system. Because we are so close to the Ohio River, we are an MS4 county, which means we can't pollute the Ohio River, and so we have to be careful about our stormwater runoff, it can't contain certain items like oils or gasolines or diesel fuels and things of that sort. So, we regulate our stormwater structures. This fund is used to repair or replace or expand stormwater structures in Warwick County. It does not include, for example, the town of Newburgh, they have their own, and it doesn't include the town of Boonville, city of Boonville, it only is for the rest of the county, the unincorporated areas, I don't think we include Chandler either.
No.
So, as a consequence of this, this benefits all the other townships. And frankly, what's happened is, we receive citizen complaints or requests, they come into the stormwater department and they allege, there's a failure in my neighborhood, it's flooding in my neighborhood, it's getting worse, or on our property, and then we investigate that with our county engineers, and they make a plan, the plan for improvements and corrections goes to the stormwater board, and the stormwater board approves it or rejects it and funds it. Those requests are prioritized, and so we try to deal with the ones that we get the most bang for our buck, or the ones that are the most dangerous or life-threatening to individuals or automobile traffic or pedestrians in the county. We have been able to use these funds over the years for a great deal of improvements, and we find that some of the subdivisions that we approved 30 years ago, and they contain stormwater structures, are in need of repair or replacement, they're wearing out, they're rotting, galvanized metal pipes deteriorate over the years, and frankly, they're quite expensive for the county to replace. So it is a user fee fund, we're trying to be self-sufficient, and as you will notice in the pass out of the Indiana Code Title 8-1.5-5.7-5-7, the amount of the user fee must be the minimum amount necessary for the operation and maintenance of the stormwater system. If you'll look at the economic report by the Economists, which has been passed out to you, the rate we're asking for just is under the minimum amount to do the current complaints we've received. So unless we cut back construction, or in turn citizens away, we can't do the work without the rate increase. We have never had a rate increase in the history of Warwick County. Originally, this rate was $5 per parcel and it was negotiated down, I think Commissioner Williams?
Don Williams.
Yeah. Approved that in a negotiation with council, so it went from $5 to $4.50. There's an analysis, and I think it's a part of the Economist's Report that you have, surrounding communities here in Indiana and tried to determine and how Warwick County compares to those rates, and rates were towards the bottom of those other communities around here. So, Steve is out in town tonight, he's with the commissioners at the annual commissioners' meeting, I think, and I drew the short straw and here I am, I was trying to answer your questions, but we must have the council's approval of a rate, then it must go to the commissioners for approval of the ordinance amendment, and before it's effective, so we do not have the right to raise it independently, the stormwater board is the first step in that process, it holds the power, it adopts what they think the rate ought to be, and then we come to you. So I'm here to answer your questions to the best of my ability, and when I can't, maybe the administrator can.
Was North Greensprings Valley subdivision one of those that you're talking about, 30 or 40 years?
It was.
And where exactly is that, I was trying to locate it on the map? I was trying to locate it on the map.
Um.
I'm not familiar with its physical location within Warwick.
Springs Valley?
Yeah, right, right around.
Bell Road, west.
That's, that's where I thought it looked like on the map. And that's where I remember some friends used to live down in that area. So there's $4 million that's needed there in your capital improvement plan. Quite a bit more than any of the others, so. $4 million for that?
Well, that's, that's the engineer's best estimate. It's put out for requests for proposals and we see what the contractors bring back. But many councilmen, many of these subdivisions are getting some age on them. They're getting hair. And so as a consequence of that, these are expensive. And in addition to that, the cost of replacement now is exceedingly more expensive by inflation. The original cost may have been 30 years ago. So particularly the older subdivisions are the ones that are the most expensive. And, and we always get into a disagreement with the utilities. The very first thing that the developers put into the neighborhoods when they're putting in a new subdivision is stormwater, drainage facilities. And then along comes electric lines. And then along comes telephone lines. And then along comes cable lines. And all of them are laid in the same right-of-way. So when we go in to replace what was the first installed improvement in that right-of-way, sometimes we incur an additional expense dealing with these utilities who have followed us in that neighborhood. And they've been there, if we've been there 30 years, they've been there almost 30 years. And that sometimes can get to be quite tedious. We have a good relationship with an electric utility company that used to service Warwick County. We don't necessarily have quite the same relationship with their successor and ownership. And so we have to.
Can you tell me what's the rate? Their stormwater?
My recollection, and don't quote me, but I think it's in the report.
Okay.
Newburgh's?
It's $10 for Newburgh.
I couldn't find Boonville's.
So are these, are these subdivisions, are we maintaining their roads as well? Are these all county for all of these?
We're maintaining, Councilman Overtone, we're maintaining the public improvements within the subdivision that have been accepted by Warwick County at the time of the platting of the subdivision. So if it's the sewer system, the stormwater sewer system, and we've accepted it at that time, then it's now a public responsibility to maintain roads, sidewalks, et cetera. The only thing we're not maintaining, obviously, is the utilities like power, cable, phone. Those companies are owning of those and they have to maintain.
And water lines, yeah. Newburgh's 1050 and Chandler is 650.
I think that sounds correct.
I think Newburgh's trying to raise theirs also. So, and I think Chandler have talked about theirs as well. So I think we're all kind of in the same boat. I know that with our projects that we have, right now, we have about seven subdivisions that are needing a little TLC. Steve's total on that, for how much it would be to fix, is about 5.7 million. With the stormwater fees that I'm getting in yearly that I go through the allow with, with the owner's office, I'm only bringing in maybe 1.8 million. So, I mean, that's.
How much money is in your account now? Can I ask that?
Hmm.
Sorry.
Looked at that today and, you know, I can't remember what.
I remember what you said in October, but I didn't know if they had an updated version of that.
Um.
Sorry, Chris.
My understanding, I don't know the answer to your question, but my understanding is that we will be in the red in 2026.
Well, I just did 2026 and you aren't going to be in the red, no.
That, that was.
We'd be in the red if you spent all this money on these projects.
Yes.
But as far as what you budgeted, they would have like 300,000 left over at the end of the year. No. That, there's not very much budgeted though for projects.
Right.
Right, yeah.
We've been very frugal. We've tried to hold back as much as we could. The board has tried to hold back as much as they can on approving projects.
Another question I have, what about the businesses? What's that going to do to their stormwater? I know the churches, churches, they, you know, they're exempt, they don't have to pay tax, but on stormwater, they got to pay that amount. So what's that going to do? Is there a different business rate? I tried to find that out today and I went back, I went back to 2010, you know, about, you know, when all this started, but.
Like, commercial and industrial is calculated by ERU. Equivalent residential unit. So the total square feet of the property, divide that by 3,100, get an ERU. ERUs are totaled between 1 and 4 and charged at a 1, which is like $54. ERU 2 is 108. ERU 3 is 162.
So two times, or three times.
Yeah.
That would be a larger number.
Maybe times that by 4.5 for a monthly rate and do a monthly rate times 12 to equal a total charge and the total charge divided by 2 for the spring and fall assessment.
Okay. And so is that number also, so that number is going to double also or increase?
It will go up, yes.
Okay.
Agriculture is exempt. Churches, nonprofits like that, they're exempt.
To pay the stormwater?
Yes.
Yes.
I thought churches did pay.
No.
Okay.
They don't pay anything on the pavement? I thought they were charged on the pavement.
I thought they did pay originally. They may have changed.
They may have paid originally, but I think we had a complaint and we looked at that.
That's what I remember when that went, so it's because of that.
Churches are exempt at this time.
Yes.
But they still have parking lots. Building is exempt, yeah.
It seems like a pretty large increase to occur all at once for people that, you know, are receiving a lot of increased costs in this current environment that we're in now.
It's been several years since the ordinance was passed. Off the top of my head, I think it's 10 years or slightly more than that, that the ordinance has been in existence. And as I alluded to, Councilman Overtone, we've never had an increase in that period of time. That probably is the incorrect way to do it. Probably we should have come to you. The board should have come to you successively over the years with smaller increases each time. But at the end of the day, what we're asking for is, is not everything to cover our current budget, but it is what the economists have analyzed and recommended, or close to what the economists have recommended. We're slightly under it. And we're less than our surrounding neighbors.
And so the homeowners then don't pay any part of the upgrade or anything?
No, no, Councilman Brooks, they do not.
Five years ago, we had a rental home and I had to pay for the cost of the culvert to correct the stormwater problem. They came in and did some drainage, but I ended up paying for the culvert.
Culverts for the highway department. They have a separate, like, road culvert.
Because it was on 261, the rental house.
Right, if it's in the road right-of-way, road piping, culvert piping, county highway.
So that's why I had to pay.
Yeah, and that's a different.
And, and the county highway department works really well with the stormwater department, as does the county surveyor's office. And we try to piggyback projects as much as we can where we have a stormwater project that needs to be done and it impacts a regulated drain. So we try to work with the surveyor's office. And we've always been able to do that, to accomplish two birds with one stone, so to speak.
So it's in the right-of-way area, then it falls.
It's under the jurisdiction of the county highway department.
Yeah, okay.
Now, you shouldn't have had to pay the labor, but they probably would have asked for the homeowner, in this case, the owner of the property, to buy the culvert.
Yeah, they have a different system. I think it's, you pay for the pipe, but then highway department sizes it correctly, so then stormwater flows.
They'll size it, then they'll, they'll tell you which size to get. You buy it, then.
Right.
And they used to, they used to even do the rock, but they'd say, they have a fee of like $250, put it in, then you got to supply, but you got to buy the pipe and the rock.
And that's, and that's a different department too, so I can't really speak 100% on that.
And that's with the highway department or state highway, whichever one you're on, yes.
And the majority of this work, isn't it contracted out and not performed in-house?
We do have, we do have employees and equipment. And we try to do as, the board asked Steve to try to do as much as he can with his own people. Okay? Because we found that's a cost savings. However, some of the projects are very technical or large or have equipment needs which we can't, we can't afford to buy the equipment on the occasional use of that piece. We do have a, an agreement with the highway department that we have a lend situation where we will borrow people and equipment back and forth to each other to accomplish the betterment of the county. But some of the projects, particularly the large ones, they are farmed out. Request for proposals, public bids, we open the bids at public meetings and the board takes them under advice and awards the contract.
So one thing I've got to ask, since I'm with District 4 and, which, you know, District 4 has very few subdivisions and all that good stuff, and you're asking all of them to give the money. How is this going to help them? So if I have them to come to me and say, Rob, why do we have to pay this extra money? What is my answer to them to be a great answer that, that money is going to go to support them? That, that, that is my question. And I have to ask that because.
No, no.
That's my district. So I, that's why I want to have that on record.
This is a county-wide drainage assessment.
Okay.
For stormwater. We are an MS4, which means the entire county, with the exception of the incorporated subdivision, or incorporated communities such as Newburgh and Boonville and Chandler. We cover the rest of the entire county, so the funds are, can be used anywhere. And as I said earlier in my presentation, they try to prioritize the work. What is the work that's most pressing that needs to be done first? And we get citizen inputs, complaints, requests from citizens. And Steve tries to prioritize those and fit them into the budget. The board looks at the construction timeline and the priority list and they make the final decision. We'll do this one, we'll not do that one, we'll move this one up, we'll move this one down, what have you. So the board approves. Steve cannot do any projects without board approval. So that happens each time. The only way to address your issue would be to have literally a separate assessment for every township or every district. And that simply doesn't work.
I, I understand that, but, but I just got to ask.
I know.
I'm just being devil's advocate, that's the way I think, so.
It's a great question.
Yeah.
Um, my, my obvious answer is, it's an MS4. We are subject to federal regulation since the 1970 Clean Water Act. We cannot, we're responsible for every drop of water that leaves Warwick County and goes into the Ohio River, including through Pigeon Creek, which runs 18 miles through downtown Evansville before it enters the Ohio River. It still carries our water. So as a consequence, we're responsible for all of that. And we have standards. The federal government depends upon the state of Indiana to regulate its counties. So we get regulated by Indianapolis. And they come down and they do MS4 audits. We just had an MS4 audit, which the council, I'm pleased to report, we passed. So they look at us, they see whether we're addressing the issues or not. Frankly, sometimes citizen complaints are not, some of our citizens start in Indianapolis instead of at Boonville. They can, they, they can come to Boonville and they can go into the stormwater office and say, hey, I got a problem in my neighborhood and we can address it. And they sometimes think they need to start in Indianapolis. And so they'll go to Indianapolis telephonically, they'll file a complaint and then we'll have to address that. And, and so stormwater also regulates new construction to make sure it's compliant and regulates the disturbance of any acre larger, any property larger than one acre. And again, that's state of Indiana requirements. So we have multiple functions that carry on. We have to maintain the system we already have and we have to watch builders building new systems to make sure they're going to comply in the future.
Speaking of new building, I have a couple of questions, just for clarification. We have a lot of buildings, a lot of new places, which is increases the amount you're going to be getting.
Yes, ma'am.
At $4.50 or whatever it is now. What would be, without any increase, what's projected budget for next year?
Do we have a budget yet?
You've got more, I mean, I know in Lakewood, we have 365 houses.
Right.
Okay, now, with Blue Lake, when they add on, would they build more? And all the new houses at Freeman Park, there's lots.
I can't directly answer your question about the budget number, but I can tell you this. If we go forward in 2026, we, we are in diminishing reserves. And at some point in time, we're going to run out of money. And, and we're not going to be able to meet the citizen requests or complaints that come into the office.
And so then?
Even, pardon me, even with the added growth of new structures in Warwick County.
There's more, more houses and more structures.
Yes, ma'am.
And even with that, you're saying that that additional money coming in isn't going to suffice?
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying. You've said it more succinctly.
You know how many parcels are in, I mean, county-wide, there's what, 48,000 parcels or whatever? What in Ohio township? And I don't know.
I do not know the breakdown per se from Ohio township.
Yeah, I don't have either. I do know that like whenever I turn in my allow every year for the stormwater fee, I'm at 86,000 parcels right now.
All right.
Like, give or take. I know it's like in the 86, 85, 86. What I do is I go through the assessor's office to get new construction that goes up. So that does include like new facilities.
That includes everything, new, not this year combined.
And it, it's, it's giving me numbers, but it's not giving me sufficient numbers. It's not a lot.
Okay, because I'm just trying to figure out how much.
It won't cover the additional costs we're incurring manually maintaining the system. And, and part of that may be, Councilman Brooks, as the older subdivisions age.
Yeah, I understand, Greensprings Valley and some of the others.
That's right.
Can, can you give us a kind of a real-world example? Is this ERUs, the residential? Am I correct in saying that that, a home, my home, your home, would basically go up about $48 a year, increase it $4?
With that increase, it'll go from $54 to 102.
To 102, so is that 40?
Fifty-four to 102.
I think that's $48, so.
That's what that.
That's a pretty steep increase for.
That's six months or a year?
A year.
Year.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a residence. Now, equivalent, if I'm saying that right, the residential equivalent. So can you give us an example of what a business might experience?
Depends on its size.
Yeah, how much ground it has and how much parking lot.
It could be two times or three times or four times.
Wow.
The equivalent.
So what is it, about 3,000 square feet? Somehow I remember that number.
That's right.
That's the residential assumption that we all have 3,000 square feet of.
Yes.
Driveway and roof and things like that.
I, I have spoken to the Economic Development Commission and asked if they thought the fee increase. We discussed whether they thought the fee increase would be detrimental to economic development in Warwick County. And he assured me he did not believe that it would be detrimental to.
I can verify that. I did talk to Steve Rowley by text today and he said the same thing. He did not think it would have a noticeable impact on economic development.
In fact, let me say something to you all. Water is, is, is a greater problem every year. And, and, and I'm not getting into a debate about the issue of global warming or weather changes. But rains are coming more frequently. And we're having five-year, 10-year, 15, 20-year rains two and three times a year. And that water has. And that water has to go someplace. And we simply, Warren County simply doesn't have the necessary physical structures to carry it in some cases. Now, the great thing about it is it dissipates. I mean, it goes away, given enough time, it goes away. I'm thinking Tanglewood Ditch. I mean, we've spent a lot of money trying to make Tanglewood Ditch work. And you can see some of that construction along Old Plank Road that stormwater funds have paid for. So that's an example.
But you, you don't have any rough idea what a business might pay in an average? Nothing?
The, the bigger number I can think of off my sheet is like Kaiser is like 1,500 for the year.
Currently pay about 1,500 a year, so for them, it would go up roughly to.
It doesn't have very far to go to the river.
Yeah. Okay, just, just curious there, how, if you had any numbers on that kind of thing? Because it is a really big, to double it basically is a.
Yeah.
Almost.
It, almost, not quite.
Almost.
And.
My comment would be, I can understand, you know, you haven't had increases, you do have more houses, the responsibility is great. I, I get that with water and that type of thing. But we've just had some significant assessment increases, and our taxes have gone up. And we already have irate people over the tax issue now. And raising it significantly in, you know, all at once, you know, not incrementally, which would be work better.
I, I understand. I wish we had done that.
I have a little bit of an issue with that, going up all at once.
I would also say that, that citizens who come into stormwater office to complain about drainage in their neighborhood or drainage in their yard can be quite irate as well. And everybody expects Warren County or government to fix their problem. And, and we, we just can't. We can't do that. We shouldn't do that, and we can't do that. And, and to all the extents possible, I mean, that's where we are. And we look at Platts and see where Platts have said, okay, homeowners are responsible for the drainage in their neighborhood as to their lot. And we turn those down. And we say, look, folks, that's not Warren County's responsibility. That's your and your neighbor's responsibility. And the problem is, you can have a neighborhood with 15 homes in it, and 13 or 14 of them will say, you're right. And we'll do that. We'll clean out the ditches, or we'll clean out the drains, we'll make them work. And then one will say, no, I'm not going to touch it. And you can't come onto my property for purposes of touching it. So now what do we do? Everybody suffers because the one person or one homeowner will not agree. That's the kinds of problems we deal with every week.
Which kind of answers my point also, that a lot of this stuff is man-made issues. Some are just like that.
Neglect.
Neglect, neglect also. Absolutely not taking care of ditches, not spraying, not spraying, round up and killing it all down and letting it all wash away and blah, 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 and building homes and building more, I mean, there's more blacktop.
There is.
Concrete laid every day. And that's, that's all man, Highway 62, that screwed up the whole part of that part of the world. So, but it's a great highway. I ain't getting wrong. It's just stuff we have to, we're rendering now.
I know.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know it's going from $54 to $104, and that's a year.
Yes.
Right? That's a year. So it sounds like a lot, like a month, but it's.
Per assessment.
For a year.
Per year.
So we could reduce your increase to like six bucks and then come back in a couple of years and do it again?
Councilman Reed, that, that's up to this council. Whatever you approve, we take back and, and the drainage board decides if they want to go forward with that number or come back before you and lobby for more.
Let me, I don't think we're right on that. I don't think we have the ability to approve a change in what your board has come up with. We have the ability, and I could be wrong.
Prove it or to deny.
Either approve it or deny.
That, that, that's true, but I think it's implied in that ordinance that you might have the ability to, to approve a different number. We would ask you not to do that, but that's, I think, an implied power of the county council.
I have a question in the process. If any number gets passed this year, is it starting to be collected next year? And how does it apply to the budget for '26?
I would assume that it would start for next year and then be 2025 to pay out, no.
2026.
2026 to pay out in 2027. So it would really start.
You don't start seeing it until '27 then?
Right. Yeah.
So if the council, to Ron's point here about approving or not approving consent, getting consent or not getting consent, what options would the stormwater have if it were, if consent were not granted? Would you have any other options?
No, there is no other source of funding. We could bond. Warren County's stormwater department has never done a bond, ever.
If this council were not to accept the recommendation from the board, the board could bring forth next year a different proposal, different rate increase.
That's what I was.
And what about taxing? Are you a taxing body, stormwater, a taxing body?
No, this is it, a fee.
Okay.
This is sort of like a utility.
Okay.
That's the best analogy I can.
And we know how we love utilities.
I know, I know.
I thought stormwater did have the ability to tax.
No, sir.
No, okay.
That's why we're here.
Okay, let's.
But you have the ability to do a bond, which is basically borrowing.
Well, we have the ability to request a bond. We could try to do a bond, but you got to sell the bond, and then you got to debt service the bond. We'd rather not do the bond because of the interest.
And if a lesser amount were approved, if we are allowed to do that, would you have to cut out some of your projects?
Well, obviously, if we don't have the money, we can't do the project.
Do you know, are they rated in order? Are they?
Steve has a list, and he prioritizes them, and he brings that list to the board. It's discussed. So the answer is yes. It's not a very formal process, but he looks at it as an engineer, determines where he thinks we get the most bang for the buck in doing the project.
So if it is denied tonight, and we ask you to come back with a lower rate and then phase it in over a period of time, does that mean that if we pass something next year, then you don't see, receive the proceeds until, is it '27 or '28?
I think it's going to be '28. Because then.
Because property taxes are a year behind, yes.
Yeah.
So your timeframe is basically tonight?
Well, we would like to, Councilman Reagan, we would like to. We'd like to keep the projects in the pipeline, pardon the pun, pipeline moving along.
Okay. Any more questions of the presenters?
Again, I apologize for you getting the B-team myself at least tonight.
You did great.
I think we might disagree with that at times, so I think you've done quite well.
There you go. Thank you. We haven't answered any other questions?
Thank you.
Not at the moment, so. So I think unless I'm incorrect, do we just either need a motion to accept or a motion to deny?
That's correct.
So I'll entertain a motion.
In which case we then have more to discuss.
And then we, yeah, after we get the motion up for.
Motion to deny.
Okay, I've got a motion to deny by Brad.
You guys are fast.
Second by Rick. Okay, discussion. Now we have more discussion.
I'd like to see it be a little less to start with. There are more houses, and I agree, the older subdivisions, you know, Colonial Hills, there are many, you know, selling real estate for 25 years. I get it. But that's a pretty steep increase in one year, especially with all the homeowners and the, the taxes that went up statewide. I'm, I'm paying a lot more. And it's not just me, it's other people. So I would like to see it be less to start with. That's my opinion. We need, it's a valuable thing, I agree.
I'm really torn. I see the need. You drive around, you see the flooding roads everywhere, and then neighborhoods are being flooded. What do we do? We're kind of stuck with this problem. And, you know, I'm thinking property taxes supposedly, since we're going to get less next year, are going to go down some.
In theory.
And so 54 every six months, I don't, I'm torn.
I just feel like with people who are on fixed incomes have been getting beat up, and beat up, and beat up. And I think those people are continuing to struggle, you know, I mean, until you actually see people who have to deal with that. I mean, that's a difficult thing. And I mean, it may not seem like much, but for some person that's struggling to get by on, what, $25, $30,000 a year on, and they may be living in a place that's rundown, and, you know, they just can't maintain it anymore. And that's, I mean, if you look throughout Boonville, I mean, that's, we've got all this whole area, just because it's right in our eyesight for a lot of us every day, is there are just houses here that people at one point in time, there were great houses. But as time moves on, you can't maintain those things. And so you end up with some person that's stuck in this house that they just can't maintain anymore. And so then they end up with another bill that's coming down the street. And I completely agree with what Greg said. I mean, I definitely can empathize with that. I mean, this is just, seems like a lot to swallow. It may seem insignificant, but after a while, I mean, you know, it's death by a thousand cuts. And we're, all of us are being cut each and every day by fees here, fees there, and so on and so forth. So that's my thoughts.
I certainly feel the need to, you know, adequately fund stormwater. I agree, you know, it should have been done over the years, and it wasn't. For us to come in now and make a 10- or 15-year adjustment is a little bit difficult to do. I'd like to see it kind of phase in over the next few years. Another thing we haven't said, we pay thousands and thousands and maybe millions of dollars to engineers over the year to do all these studies, and they haven't warned us anything about this, or, you know, like, hey, you know, prepare. I mean, think about them kind of situations too, the money we spent. If we wouldn't maybe save, spend a lot of money on them telling us about water or some things, we could use that money to do ditches. I mean, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, water does not lie. It goes to the lowest spot, okay? And it don't take your rocket scientists to realize that. And how much water goes off, you can figure that out. I'm, I know I'm part farmer, and I realize water, so. And that's why I'm torn about it, because I'm probably the biggest person up here about water drainage out of all of us, maybe in the whole room. You know, I, I'm just, that's what I do. I see. So that's. We waste a lot of money on other things that we could take that money and use here. Maybe if we cut out some of that money and put into this, we have a saving on a lot. I don't know. A lot of this is man-caused issues. But a lot of it isn't either, but a lot of it is.
Extreme weather, we have a lot of it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. No. No. Sorry. Again afterwards. More discussion, council members? Okay, I have a motion by Brad and a second by Rick to deny. All in favor? Motion carries seven zero.
Brad, what are the rules on, on a lower amount? Are we just?
They can bring it back. Oh, yeah, they can bring it back.
They can bring it back.
Okay. Resolution, meeting dates?
Yes.
Okay, so all that, we have all the Tuesdays except the two election nights.
Yes.
We're moving to.
A week later.
Calling week.
Yeah.
So. So I need a. Number 10. I was waiting for you, seeing if you were.
Actually, I was waiting for you.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve, motion by Greg. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Chris. More discussion on the dates?
Is this our meeting dates what we're talking about?
Our meeting dates.
Was it Tuesday again?
Tuesday, yeah.
I know, it's Thursday. You're too late, they already said Tuesday.
And the only Tuesdays, there's two Tuesdays a week. With only, but they're both election dates.
Yeah.
For the county, so we'll move it to the week after. So, all in favor? Five. All opposed to two.
I'm for Thursdays. I have too much stuff on Tuesdays.
I'm saying, I always got too much on Thursday. That's why we're back to Tuesday then. Okay, names are Rick and Pat. Okay, pointless discussion.
Yes, I just wanted to update you that I sent the list to you guys just to start reviewing. I have been reaching out to everyone that's currently serving to see if they want to serve again. I'm compiling that list, and then I will send it out to you guys, especially if there's an, you know, someone that doesn't want to serve again. So you guys can start researching that information.
As Greg and I were talking earlier, we have one that we haven't replaced, who did pass away.
I, I reached out to them today, but she hasn't got back to me yet, so.
Okay. All righty, public comment, anybody on?
Nope.
Nobody else?
You see, a person asks.
So, any other business?
Um, one thing I just wanted to bring up, and I wanted to maybe erudite or bring up and, and maybe help people understand, I've had a couple of department heads talk to me about the letter that we sent out last month that we approved, you know, for, you know, I have ones like, well, you know, I have this. If we have attorney fees or this or that. You know, I'm like, I'm, I'm talking like on, on big county business or whatever. I mean, you know, well, if it is a 911 and it's emergency, and you've got to have money, you're still welcome to turn it in.
Yes.
And so I just want, I just wanted to make sure, to put it on record, that, you know, all of our department heads, make sure you understand that you can't come to us, but, you know, if you have something in dire need and straight, come to us. So I just wanted to make sure. I, some people thought the letter may have been a little brisk. I guess I could say a word.
Brisk?
Brisk. I was being nice by saying brisk.
It said, unless it was an emergency, I think.
Yeah, I know, I know, but some, I'm taking it a little wrong, you know, text, you know, when you text things or write papers down, if you don't talk, you know.
I'm going to be surprised how many emergencies.
Put a couple smalley faces on it, right? So I, I just wanted to make sure of that. That's it.
Of what emergency is and what not, sure we. Yeah, so, okay. All right.
Motion adjourned.
So motion by Rick. Second by Brad. They all opposed? Are all in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Meeting adjourned.
Greg, thank you for the cookie and for the cookie.